Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Polly. Trustee Laughlin.
Uh, excuse the absence.
Clerk Palovich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Crow.
Uh, excuse the absence.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here.
Uh, moving forward to the adoption of the agenda, uh, there would be one s- this noticeable correction I just uh for the minutes uh downstream in the attendance box, uh, Mr. Florip is on representation of uh Mr. Golden for this meeting. Um, with that being, that correction being stated, are there any additions, corrections, or substitutions to the agenda as presented? Hearing none, uh, to entertain a motion, we have a motion on the table, is there support? Or it's been moved and supported, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, uh, with one correction signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same.
Oh, that's what I heard.
That's why I, I, I thought it was a sneeze, I was like.
No, I heard something, I'm like.
Some feedback. Okay, purpose of the meeting, uh, at this point in time, uh, this is the first opportunity for public comment. Now, if there's any public comment, uh, in the crowd or online, um, please state your name for the record, if you're in person to the podium, online, please. Just the bottom task bar.
Does that have to be an agenda item?
Yes, at this point in time, it does have to be an agenda item, um, but I see no public comment, uh, either in person or online.
Of course, the public comment, I don't know where this is appropriate, I mean, I just, I'll have some questions on policy procedure, while I have time to talk during that portion of it.
Uh, yeah, cause that wouldn't qualify as public comment, as an employee.
I just, just wanted to make sure.
Uh, so moving forward, uh, purpose of the meeting, uh, at this point, number one, North Point Shores, Mr. Florip, would you like to, uh, give a brief assessment of that process thus far?
This is my, um. So we, uh, had believed that we were, uh, ready to go with the first of three resolutions here today, uh, to start the three meeting process uh, for doing, uh, the latest renewal of the North Point Shores Special Assessment District for their road maintenance program. Um, the last one having been two years, this one, uh, going forward for five years, um. We thought, uh, we had things wrapped up the past couple of days regarding, uh, measurements of the linear footage of the road and linear footage of each parcel, uh, along the road, and, um, late last night, uh, Alan Byrd discovered some, uh, some issues in the records here um, that probably go way back as far as, uh, um, how measurements for these lots are, are recorded in our uh, internal assessment records, um, and moreover, uh, he hadn't understood, uh, that in this project, we're looking for road frontage, uh, not lake frontage. Um, so, uh, our numbers are off, uh, from what we were planning on using today and going forward with, uh, so it's a matter now of we've got to come up with a road frontage number for each lot, which we can back into and various, various ways of doing that, um, but it's just gonna take a few more days here and, uh, potentially, uh, another special meeting at some point to make sure we're still on track for the July tax bills.
Are, are these platted lots, Dan, or anything?
Uh, it's a, it's a mixture, there's, uh, the platted lots in the North Point Shores, uh, subdivision, and then there are meets and bounds lots on each end of them, uh.
The platter last should be easy, but the meets and bounds might be a little bit of a.
Believe it or not, it's, it's backwards on that, yeah, it's the other way around, but, you know, as I said, uh, we'll be able to back into them.
Not easy to locate and read off of.
Uh, the last time I looked at that particular plat, it didn't necessarily have a specific measurement for eat, you know, a lot of flats don't.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you've got uniform lots, um, but as I said, uh, we'll be able to back into numbers and, and get accurate numbers, uh, on that, so.
Equalization may be able to help us.
Yeah.
But they're, they're their new fancy.
That would, yeah, we have, we have methodologies that are corrective actions are going to be forthcoming so that we can, uh, solidify a, a solid assessment, um, for the, probably the first time since it's been a district.
Yeah, so, but that would also require, as I said, another, another special meeting here, uh, to keep us on track with, uh, making sure we can get those on the July first tax bills.
So, uh, any other questions for Mr. Florip on, uh, the North Point Shores Special Assessment? Okay, moving forward, um.
I was just saying, do we think it'll be like next week, we'll be having another special meeting, or?
It's gonna depend on what I can figure out and what I can make happen over the weekend as far as backing into, into these numbers. Maybe by the end of next week, we might be able to do one, um, but I can be in touch with you guys Monday, Tuesday-ish and see how, see how far we get there.
Okay. So moving forward, uh, with a resolution presented, uh, resolution regarding Recreation Passport Grant Program, uh, and the Ripley Street Bike, Bike Path Connection. Uh, whereas the Charter Township of Alpena supports the submission of an application titled Ripley Street Bike Path Connection to the Recreation Passport Grant Program for connection of the citywide HMA bike path, and whereas the proposed application is supported by the community's five-year approved parks and rec plan or current annual capital improvement plan, and whereas the Charter Township of Alpena is hereby making a financial commitment to the project in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars in matching funds, cash, and/or force account. Now therefore be it resolved that the Charter Township of Alpena hereby authorizes submission of a Recreation Passport Grant Program application for fifty thousand dollars and further resolves to make available its financial obligation amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars, twenty-five percent of the total fifty thousand dollar project cost during the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Is there a motion to approve such resolution?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion? If we have any questions, we do have Becky Revard from here on engineering, but that says well, we'll put together this.
So just to understand it quick, it's a fifty thousand dollar grant and our portion is?
Twenty-five percent.
Twelve thousand five hundred.
Yep.
And do, did we budget this money?
Yes. And by that maintenance.
And, and the fifty thousand is over a boat, so it's a sixty-two, five per month?
It's the other way.
So when they write it, they write a grant for the total project amount in E B, which is one thousand five hundred.
So that we're asking for thirty-seven, five then, is that what?
Yeah, for a total project cost of fifty. As kind of proposed with the, the aggregates and the, the di- design proposal on the, uh, third sheet of this. Uh, if there's no other questions, or comment, uh, roll call please.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay, uh, the, the next item, uh, Ryan is, uh, Reggie is with us from the Alpena County Road Commission, and our previous meeting, uh, discussion was uh, had as to, um, a couple of different ends of the spectrum, and when it comes to, uh, the dust control agreement, uh, with Alpena County Road Commission. Uh, and the question being, uh, really, and I asked Mr. Reggie to be here this afternoon is what would it look like to do two applications, and Mr. Reggie, if you'd like to take the podium, we can actually, if there's questions, um, he provided, uh, a breakout of what that second application would cost, uh, brine versus chloride, but sir, tables.
Uh, yeah, I mean, ultimately, we, you know, this is just an estimate that we came up with based on last year's gallons, it varies a little bit, but, um, it has been historically our policy, a second application is, uh, actually one and a half times what we, what a first application is, um, there's very few instances we recognize when we're, when we need second applications, um. The, as everyone that lives here knows, I mean, our, our summers, I could just like the winter we're having, it's all over the map, so, um, you know, trying to guess whether or not we're gonna need to do that is anybody's guess, you know, if you have a rainy summer, roads hold together, uh, or, you know, a light rain, roads hold together, we, we won't need this kind of thing, so.
Yes, look.
What's the difference between brine and chloride?
So chloride is a thirty-five percent salt solution, um. Mineral well brine is, we spec twenty-six percent, so the chloride is actually, it's a uh, a richer mixture.
Okay.
Tends to hold better, but obviously, as you can see, there's greater cost to it, too.
Okay. So we usually do the brine.
Uh, a little bit of both, uh, you know, we, we often will, um, you know, I don't have a list of roads in Alpena Township that we use.
No, I just, I, that's fine.
Yeah, the chloride is often used on, on.
Higher volume.
Higher volume roads and whatnot.
Thanks, I was just curious what the difference was.
So this was a discussion, uh, that was tabled to the next subsequent meeting, um, and so I, out of my emotion, we have both, uh, the original road agreement with one application at thirty-three thousand dollars, which historically that has been, uh, the direction that this board has taken with a single application, or now we know what the total cost for, uh, having a second, uh, application would be at eighty thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. Trustee Reiner.
Uh, Ryan, uh, is this, is this necessary for helping maintain the quality of the road, or is it just for dust control?
Oh, it, it, it helps maintain the quality of the road, um, you know, with the, with the chloride or the brine, that absorbs moisture, anytime you have a gravel road, a slight amount of moisture is great because it helps maintain that compaction, um, when they start to get loose, get dry, that's when you see roads start to fall apart. Oftentimes, you'll first see washboard in it.
Well, then, reason this came up, and I'm the one who made the motion to table, was to, uh, because we had some citizens, just a few, a couple, I guess, is really more accurate, that said, it's a waste of our money, and, uh, we're not here to waste money, of course, but they, they live on these roads, and they said it's just, you know, after the first rain doesn't do them any good, they're probably looking at maybe for more of a dust control, that's, yeah, that's that.
Sure, um, it's, it's just a, as important to control the dust, um, number one, DQ has a major issue with what's called fugitive dust, and that's what you get in these situations. Um, two, eh, you know, it is a safety issue. Um, you know, some of these roads, when you get high volumes of traffic on it, and you bend down and they get dusty, um, you've got a cloud of dust, you can't see maybe what's coming. Um, you know, other traffic, traffic in front of you, traffic behind you, stuff like that, so, uh, I would not recommend not doing it. I, I think that would negatively impact the community. Because these roads also we maintain for the traveling public, not just the people that's.
Having grown up on a gravel road, I mean, I don't think they were doing, well, I know what they were doing back then, it's totally illegal now, but, uh, uh, you know, I worked at our dealership where we, uh, had a lot of used oil, uh, but anyway, um, the, uh, you know, the I mean, still, I think what I've seen these roads after they've been brined, you know, especially in July, late July, August, you're still gonna have the cloud of dust.
Brine is definitely an inferior product to chloride, but you can see here from the dollars, I mean, it's, it's a choice you gotta make when you're spending the money, uh. We, we do, we certainly don't see brine holding there as long as chloride does.
So, yes.
So with the, so this thirty-three thousand is for just a brine solution?
It's a mixture.
Okay.
It's, some roads get brine, some roads get chloride, some of your lower volume roads, um, you know, that might see forty, fifty cars a day, those are good candidates for brine. But when you've got a road such as say Misery Bay Road, that's a, that's an application, I'm certainly chloride that with the amount of traffic it sees.
As someone who lives on a dirt road, I would like to see it done at least once, so I have two or three weeks that I could sit on my front porch.
Yeah.
Oh, so, okay, so that's different than what I understood from before, I thought you didn't feel it, did you, like?
Good. So we actually.
I feel like it gets a few weeks out of it.
Okay.
Unless it rains, it seems like it, someone told you, once it rains, it's gone, and I feel like if we get rain, it kind of holds up a little better.
Yeah, me- memories get short to, you know, uh, how long it's been there and whatnot, um, not, not discrediting anyone's opinion on it, but, um. What a lot of folks will elect to do, and is, is a very reasonable, um, a lot of folks will have CNS carriers apply dust control in front of, you know, they'll get with their neighbors, and for a couple hundred bucks, they'll do it on their own.
In addition to.
Correct, and they use a different product than we use.
That's a good idea.
And it does.
I thought that, I didn't know that was even legal to do.
Exception, so, well, well, that's, that's a, that's a civil option for those, those homeowners with, uh, load frontage, uh, but in, in a hybrid scenario, because within this conversation, I don't think that having two applications is, uh, the greatest opportunity in utilization of money, but if another option could be, poten- potentially as a, as a marriage between brine and chloride in, in the, uh, original thirty-three thousand dollar uh, road agreement, uh, the math comes up to be, if we said we wanted to follow through with this road agreement solely using chloride, uh, at, uh, point you know, seventy, seventy-one point four cents, uh, for a first application, that would put the total of, for our dust agreement at fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. So, we actually have a hybrid scenario.
Can, can we do that?
I mean, I guess I throw that back at you, what, what's the volume and what does that capacity look like?
I would have to revisit our numbers on that, because when we, um, we, we do leave ourselves, um, leeway in our request for prices when we get those, um, but those are often based around historical numbers, um. I, I wouldn't want to promise that at this point, I'm certain it's, it's a possibility, um. I would definitely want to investigate that first, I mean, you're, you're talking about adding sixty-two thousand gallons of brine, or, or of chloride.
Yeah.
That's a lot, a lot of chloride.
Yeah, I, I, I just took it by the, the first application rate of.
Yeah, exactly, no, I mean, I could definitely look into that and, and see what effect that would have on.
Well, and I guess I looked at this board, is that something that you would like Mr. Reggie to look into before we solidify?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, so some roads that are that don't have as much traffic get brine only.
Correct.
Other roads that are, have more traffic, get chloride and brine.
Correct, no, just chloride.
Just chloride, so I guess I'm not sure what you're, are you saying give chloride to everybody?
That would be a hybrid scenario of using, uh, uh, longer lasting.
And I don't personally think like the lesser used roads probably need the chloride, the more expensive.
I would also caution though, I mean, yes, chloride is a more robust product, but it still fades too.
Yeah.
Um, that may not be a solution.
Um, I feel that, I mean, we have our budget done and it's already approved, I think just go with the.
Would you like to make that into?
I will make a motion that we, um, go with the original, um,
thirty-three thousand.
Proposal of thirty-three thousand dollars, and if we choose that we want it different next year, make the change, but our budget's already done this year, so.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the, the dust, uh, road agreement, uh, from Alpena County Road Commission for thirty-three thousand dollars, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Well, at least we got educated more, yeah.
So moving forward in the agenda, uh, before us, we have, um, yes, thank you very much, enjoy the day, sir. Uh, next item of new business is policy and procedure recommendations, Laura, what do you like to?
Um, policy procedures, um, Matt, we were, um, I was provided with, um, four new, um, policies and procedures for us to consider, we had a meeting and, um, we're recommending that we approve the motor vehicle driving policy, the driving record review policy, vehicle use policy, and social media policy as presented.
Yes.
I just want to say that I think these were the ones I forwarded to you, that these were recommended by, um, our insurance risk.
Mike Gombos.
Yeah, I mean, yes, but is, is a risk manager, Harp, yeah. Yeah, recommended when we met with him that we adopt these. So this is on the advice of our insurance, yes.
Did you want, if you had any comments to these?
Yeah, uh, obviously, our fire department policies come from Mr. Gombos as well. So I see there's some wording changes, a lot of those very similar, some, there's just some wording changes, but I would however point out in, under the vehicle use policy. Uh, let me start on the vehicle use first, um, line item six, um. There's a, there's a concern for me in this, uh, category, we're non-employees as passengers, and I understand that on our normal operations, and I understand the, the risk liability, but we do have special functions for the fire department such as praise and different events like that, that we do have non-fire department staff sometimes on our vehicles, and different events that, like the Brown Trout Festival, we have people in our vehicles to show kids and different things like, so I would caution that we put that stringent, uh.
It's actually shown in, inside of six, that there are exceptions to that rule.
Okay.
But trustee Reiner.
Well, but the, the move, vehicle's not moving at, at that time with.
If it's in a parade, it is, yep.
You know, uh, I would cringe at that from liability standpoint, uh, I, uh, that, that troubles me greatly, and I wonder, you know, our insurance, I def- you know, I'm not, I'd leave that to Steve to check our coverages, whether we even covered in such liabilities. Uh, I wouldn't want such a sad event to ever, um, not only happen, but I wouldn't want it to happen with, uh, with, uh, us being the ultimate liability without a insurance help, the, the problem I've got there is, you got kids, if you got kids on the vehicle or, or parents and kids on the vehicle, and you're rolling down the street, and you've also got kids on the sidelines, and you're throwing candy, for example, uh, I cringe every time I see that, uh, at a parade, because you're just asking for somebody to get into, seriously, um.
So.
Cause they run out into the street.
So there already are corrective measures in there to have exceptions, if you would continue to read forward into those paragraphs, you'd see that.
The township supervisor.
Well, I'm reading the one that says non-employees as passengers, that's right. Soon as I see that, that's my red light, that, you know, and this is a past practice that's happened everywhere in the United States with people in parades.
This came from our insurance carrier, same language.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I guess.
Any other points to?
Uh, absolutely. Let me just dig through them, um, not in the vehicle policy, but it'll be under the social media page, uh. Well, first, the first page under motor vehicle driving policy, um.
I thought we were on social media.
I thought you said you're.
I'm, I'm sorry. Motor vehicle policy, I, I did have a little bit more to, to touch base on there, um, first page of the motor vehicle policy. Obviously, we don't have that in the fire department policy procedure, so that's something that should probably be added, uh, along with the, if this is what the township's going to have, it should be in the fire department policies manual as well, I would assume, that's what you would want.
I guess, I'm not sure where you're at.
You're in the motor vehicle policy.
The first page of the motor vehicle policy, so, and then, in that policy, I was just referring that, you do not have that mirrored in the township fire, uh, committee, uh, policies and procedures.
At least still impactful size.
So.
The whole is not in the.
Okay, what I, my thought is on this, whatever our township, why policy and procedures, it is necessary for the fire department to amend to make sure that you are in compliance with the overall township policy and procedures.
That was one thing that you, cause when you brought forward the policy and procedure site specific to that department, you didn't marry that with the policy and procedure, you already had some.
It was something that was presented by our insurance risk manager at that time, so, that's why I was questioning where.
So the over, the, the overarching policy and procedure manual sets precedent over a department specific, but yes, you are correct, we could easily put that, uh, you could add it to the.
Also, at the very bottom of this, uh, item number four, on the motor vehicle policy, um, I don't believe that's a Michigan compiled law that you have in there, it looks like it's an Indiana compiled law. So, I guess I would question that, uh.
What are you referring to, that?
It's that highlighted.
That's, that's an Indiana code, it's not a Michigan M C L.
Okay, well, I'm not, uh, giving legal advice to the county, we, we can get the Michigan code.
Yeah, so just plug in the.
And I want to make sure that you, you know about that anyhow, um, and then, that should be all, sorry for the confusion earlier, about the, uh, motor vehicle, I'm just trying to find the social media policy, if you would.
But did you want to say some?
I have something to say too, but.
Russ, yes.
Well, the other comment, as I recall, as we went over these and we were, uh, making the recommendation of the board at the committee level, uh, there's the ability to be more restrictive in your department policies, I think there's language in there that says you can be more restrictive, but you can't be more, uh, expanded upon. So, yeah, uh, you'd understand that, that's pretty typical statutory stuff, where, where state law will say, you know, uh, county could be more restrictive or whatever municipality, but not like, my, not expand upon, yeah.
Yes.
Uh.
Right, Dan?
Um, I'm just looking at operator's license, um, item number C, it says, it shall be the responsibility of the department head to obtain and review Michigan motor vehicle driver's license abstract for each applicant, blah, 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 I'm just thinking it might be better to have that centrally done by like your office, the clerk's office or the supervisors, so that it's.
We want to give you more stuff.
Well, yeah, we don't have enough to do.
It's already kind of taking place with the iChat and those aspects, correct?
Correct, correct.
Or Alpena County Sheriff's Department, so.
Right, and I don't think we want every department head, because I feel like at some point, we may be leasing a vehicle and that we would be using that for our postage runs, bank runs, going out of town, going to but all the field work Nathan does, so, I'm just saying, there could be more than just the fire department that we are at some point, so I think we should make this broader, cause you don't want every department head running motor vehicle reports and stuff.
I think, since you're the keeper of the records, it only makes sense, and you the policy or your personnel policies.
Would you give the language of amendment to the recommendation?
I would just say, um, it shall be the responsibility of the clerk's office to obtain and review.
Okay.
That's what, we discussed that actually, but we just didn't know, we wanted to.
Throw it on. Well, it's usually me or Haley there.
Were you able to catch the language as to the?
Just remove department head and adding clerk's office.
That's, that's, yeah.
Yes, why?
Yeah.
No, no, part of the thing is, there's a reporting inquiry here, if somebody gets a citation or something, then.
Yeah, and I, I, I did make a note, like, did you guys develop a form? Or anything for consent?
Form for checking with the Secretary of State or.
I did email both of you a section that we needed to work on for a form, for one of these.
I think.
I didn't know what that, you, I, you emailed, and I didn't know.
You're gonna check somebody's driving, I think there's a form, state form for that, is my point.
Okay, so.
That's what you're talking about.
We need to look for state form, okay?
Yeah. And then you had.
Uh, I actually, it has one more that, couldn't, couldn't find it, but I had an asterisk here, uh, under the drive, motor vehicle, uh, driving.
Uh, this, what section?
It'd be, be, section five, paragraph five.
Yeah.
So in there, uh, at the bottoms, the last sentence in the paragraph, this shall include but not limited to the use of cellular telephones, computer, electronic navigation devices, and/or text messaging devices. My concern is there, all of our navigation is used through iPads, cell phones, while responding to emergencies, that's how we find where we're going.
But my question, uh, yes, my audience. So wouldn't you put your address in and then take off down the road, you're not like driving down the road going, where is twenty-seven eighty-four, U S twenty-three north, you've already got it programmed.
I just agree, we still end up having to look.
Well, you have to look at it, right, but, I think that's different than actually.
But now, even with the new Fords, it has a, a smart screen in it, so inherently, there's some archaic language, but the point is independent phones in operation, uh, with technologies being built upon, I mean, there's some redundancy.
I think what we're really looking for is hand-free devices is what it should possibly say, no, cause today's technology out there.
I guess I'm not sure what you mean by.
So, in, in the motor, motor carrier laws in the state of Michigan, if you're in a commercial vehicle, we're not really considered a commercial vehicle, but we kind of are. Uh, if there's a wireless device, like a hands-free device where you could talk through your onboard system, that's the way to.
Connectivity.
That should be something that we should reflect upon this, I'm just thinking of my, my thing, cause a lot of my business sometimes is on the phone, but I have a hands-free device, device that I, that I bought from their truck to put in there, so I can keep it hands-free.
So we could simply in se- section. So we could simply in section, uh, five of the motor vehicle policy at the end of that sentence, amend that sentence. Not to include Bluetooth devices. Done.
You don't think that's a distraction?
It is. If, if in a perfect situation, we'd have two people in the vehicle and the one could be the navigator and the other could be the driver, but we don't have that situation.
I have to point out distractions then. Sometimes we have two radios going, uh, a map to get to where we go.
Right. There's probably enough going on.
So, so then. Yeah, there's already enough going. But there again, we're not trying to, you're, you, I understand you as a, a department head are only singular in your focus. This is an overarching policy for all employees. Uh, so if we start developing a site specific just to the concerns of the fire department, we may be missing the boat on some other employees.
Right.
So.
And I understand that. My concern is, is if I'm sitting here looking at my map, going to an emergency run. And I hear, or somebody goes by to me and sees me on my, they think I'm on my, uh, cellphone. And they call the township supervisor and complain that a township vehicle, somebody's on their phone. Now we're in violation of a policy.
Yeah, but I think it's different if you're doing that, or if you're programming in where you're going while you're driving, because people do that all the time.
And, and there again, we, we, we're, we're kind of going off the rails a little bit because we already have iPads in the emergency response. And actually now we have smart screens within the Fords, correct?
Right.
So I mean.
So we have to. When we use iPads, we use the Android nine-one-one.
Yeah.
On the iPad.
Yep.
We have to now connect the iPad to the truck itself. Uh, which is not currently being done.
Okay. So, uh, does, does that iPad have Bluetooth connectivity?
I do not know the answer.
Because I would assume that it does. Most Apple products do, um, even though I have a this, I despise them. Um, so maybe that's the best way to marry those technologies. Yeah. Cause I know the further fact that new truck has the ability to have Bluetooth connectivity.
I'll, I'll check that out with.
So it becomes a moot point. So, so we can always amend policies. But the reality is with Bluetooth tooth connectivity and, and getting back to the board's position is. You have to have a roadmap to know where you're going. And that would start before you leave shop. I mean.
And, and typically that's the case, but there are those circumstances that which sometimes we have to be on. I'll have central dispatch call me and say, hey, we need you to be aware when you go to this place, the key is located at such and such. And I have to be able to, uh, relay that to my staff. We have to be able to communicate in that situation.
And you have, those communications are typically taking place over the radio frequencies, correct?
Uh, no, because when they did that stuff, they call us on our cell phones and they typically call me while I'm responding. Or, and I have to let my people know.
So then maybe they should give some consideration to motor vehicle law.
Well, I'm just letting you know, some of these things could possibly come up, and I would hate to see an employee get, have to be disciplined. Because they're doing their job and, and using their devices.
So I guess with that being said, we, we could make, uh, in terms of, uh, section five. Really the all encompassing catch would be, uh, excluding Bluetooth tooth technologies.
Or, or even if, if they're plugging in the iPad, I think the iPad has carplay capability too. So.
Exactly.
But if, e- even if it didn't, and they had to plug in their chargers in the charger port, it, just do that before you get on the road.
So I mean, in, in section five, we could add a, a partial sentence at the end excluding Bluetooth devices. That clarifies. To me, that clarifies everything right there.
Frankly, I mean, realistically, uh. Mark, you know, this is probably only going to be an issue if there's an accident.
That would possibly be the case in anything. I mean. Obviously in the commercial vehicle code laws, you get an accident, it's automatic. Uh, they're going to be looking at your phones. They're going to be looking at everything. And.
And insurance companies.
But we don't, as you've already formally stated, we don't submit to those vehicle commercial laws. Because we've had instances where staff, not now, but accidents have occurred in township equipment. And, and there's been no accountability on that. So we don't follow that procedural aspect. So they're in. If we add one partial sentence saying excluding Bluetooth devices, there henceforth you have the ability to utilize hands-free technology. And all the remaining aspects of it is in there because the power plan in. Several states that put all this information into a template, that language was never changed. That is how it was presented.
I'm just pointing out concerns that I have as a department head where this could possibly be a potential problem. And then, uh.
So, social media policy as another.
Yeah, I have one in there. Uh, I'm trying to remember what paragraph it was, and I never highlighted because I, this was hot off my printer before I came over here, but.
Sent it last, yesterday afternoon.
I printed it this afternoon. So, um. Uh, Jim, do you have a copy of this with you? No. It was, uh, it's the use of, and I don't know what paragraph is, but it's the use of social media for your badge, insignias and different things like that. So. Uh, okay, here it is. Uh, N, under the. Number four, uh, heading N underneath that column. Using images of any official municipal logo, patch, badge, or sign on personal web pages is prohibited without the express written approval. Of the municipal board or designate. So I don't know if that's, if I'm the designate in that particular situation, but we have people that will go out and doing, uh. Fire, uh. Prevention stuff like the brown trout. We take all kinds of pictures. We're out doing muscular dystrophy. We're taking all types of pictures and those get posted on social media sites. That's how it's showing our, uh. I guess, if you will, our activity in the community.
Keyword here is personal. So if you don't post it on your personal Facebook page or, uh, Twitter that you use personally. Uh, I think that's the keyword, would I not?
But the township does not have any social media.
Right.
We don't have Twitter, Twitter. We don't have Facebook. We don't have.
So.
So.
Why would it be posted?
That's what I. So anytime it would be posted, it would be on someone's personal flight.
So you're going to try and regulate my personal site or what I do at home?
Of our stuff. Yeah.
If I'm taking a picture of Jimmy's uniform and that he was out doing fire prevention work and I want to put it on my site and share it with my friends, that's going to be a violation of policy?
If you've got somebody's picture on it, especially if it's underage child, absolutely.
If they have the consent for that picture.
Well, you'd want it writing and you'd want it given to the clerk.
I think that's a stretch.
I, I mean, I know on our website, I mean, we have pictures, so that's considered. I mean, that falls in, I mean, using images or municipal.
But that's our website, which is, which is different than social.
Sure.
What, your personal website in your.
It's, yeah, I was sorry.
So there's, there is also, we could actually just squash this pretty quickly because it does say designate. So once again, policies and pre- procedures are not solely department specific. So you're bringing some things and concerns to this board, but this is an overarching policy.
Okay.
And so if the board declares as department has as you as a designate. Then at that point in time, what is?
So you want to discipline me if my, if my staff posts something on social media.
On anybody. For the record, we would prefer never to have to discipline anyone.
Michelle, I know where this goes. Okay. I know how this can go. And I'm saying that that is an overreach. And it's a first amendment right for these people to use their personal social media to do whatever they want to do, right? How about the guy?
Chief Hanson, and, and at this point, Chief Hanson, if you have nothing else constructive. And I'm not going to get into a first amendment debate at this, we brought forth, and that language henceforth. Comes from the individual that you know extremely well, and that language was not changed at all. So.
My concern is we had individuals in this building. What was their first amendment right? Was everybody uptight about that? I mean, this is the things.
There's a reason that municipalities have social media policies.
I, I understand that.
Otherwise it would not have been brought forth by Mike Gombos.
Right. I'm thinking it's just a tad bit of an overreach and I'm going to talk to Mike about it.
Yeah. Well.
Uh. Just because I think that's an overreach on our, on our behalf.
Yeah. Are there any other?
Uh, not at this time.
Yeah. Thank you very much. So we have recommendations brought forward. There's already some corrections in terms of the motor vehicle driving policy and actually inserting the proper, uh.
Can I re, I'll just restate my motion when I read that in the beginning to, um.
So you are making a motion?
Yeah. Okay. I mean, kind of when I, Nathan referred it to me and I just kind of read them off. Um, I'll make a motion that, um, the board adopt the. Motor vehicle driving policy, driving record review policy, vehicle use policy, social media policy as amended.
Yeah, we have a friendly amendment to the motion, uh, and to the supporter.
Who's, what's supported it?
We have a motion and support for their discussion. Seeing none. Uh, all those in favor, uh, actually it's a policy. We'll do it. We'll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Clerk Clavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Moving forward in the agenda, uh, is, uh, number five, uh, fire department R and R, fire truck repair invoices.
Okay, annually we're required to do maintenance on our vehicle DOT inspections. Uh, these items were budgeted items, uh. And there was money left in the fund as planned by myself, that we didn't take any budget adjustments from equipment maintenance. Uh, so these things could be done prior to the end of the fiscal year. I will say that, uh, I had reached out to R and R on several different occasions, asking them however, to give me, uh, a service quote. Uh, he gave me a generic quote with different things, but it wasn't listed per truck. Uh, with no final totals at the end, but after I finally totaled up his original, uh, email that he had sent with the, like a shop quota estimator, estimator he put it on. It did total the same, uh, amount. So that was good, but I told him I had wanted a, a formal quote for each truck prior to, uh. Them doing service on them. Of course, that didn't get relayed to the mechanic that was doing the service on them. And, uh, he knew he had to have our, uh, stuff gone completed before the end of the year. So he'd already had. Most of it, no, he did all of it while I was on vacation basically. Um, and I turned around, I had a discussion with, uh, the supervisor. And I said, I, I need to get these bills, I'm assuming right away. And he said, yes. So I provided those yesterday. Uh, it took a little doing to get them to give me the invoices that quick. Uh, the only thing I, I've got their inspection sheets, their invoices. The only thing he hasn't forwarded me yet is the DOT inspection forms, and that's supposed to be a sticker that goes on the door of the vehicle. But in his, in his, uh, invoices, he states on there, let me just read one of them. Um. Maintenance inspection of the brush DOT and the brush truck report to file, uh, so those will be coming. But the maintenance at this time has been completed on everything except for engine three. I elected not to do maintenance on engine three for the simple fact is that that, uh, vehicle has been listed on the asset disposal list. I know what you're, the next question is going to be, it's still in our fleet. But the miles on that in, uh, individual piece of equipment. Don't warrant us doing a, uh, repair this year, in my opinion. We could possibly have a DOT inspection done on that, uh. But I wouldn't recommend the, uh, oil changes and stuff like that, because that's a, a, a costly expense with all them big filters.
Yes.
We don't have to have a DOT inspection every year?
Uh, yeah, you're supposed to, but that vehicle's sitting there lame right now and it's, we don't have certified air packs on it. It's basically, I'm not sure what the, the direction of this board would be if we want to put the money into this or if we're going to try to sell it. I know it's on the asset disposal list from, I don't know, back last.
Yeah, I just couldn't find it on it when I looked, I looked again.
Okay.
I don't.
I know we put that truck in the ambulances, uh, all on that same meeting. Uh, and I think.
Look again.
Mr. Skibby actually read that or made that motion. I can't remember exactly. Uh.
So outside of that, the, the issue that I have at it is whether it was in the budget or not, is this work took place. At well over five thousand, going on north of six thousand dollars without board approval.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's, I mean, we got to do better than that. Um, that's shame on R and R. I mean.
The, well, a simple question I had was. Do you always do this in the last month of the fiscal? This kind of stuff?
Uh, I don't know. I mean, what have our records shown?
Well, that's what we did last year around this time as well. So if you, if you would rather have it at a different time of the year, we got to figure out. That date, because the DOT inspection should be coincide with your maintenance, right? So I don't know. Once you kind of get stuck to a date, it's like your yearly physical. You get stuck to the date. You always got to do it one day later the next year. I mean, we're kind of the same boat here. I mean, we can take it into the next year's budget, I guess, and do it next year, April, and all this will.
Well, my, my, no, because then you're, you're forcing the vehicles that need annual inspections outside of an annual cycle.
Right. So.
The, the recommendation would be to actually do it prior, uh, I would say the end for the annual, the meeting in January. Cause then you don't have the issue of, uh. Six thousand dollars in an expenditure without board approval. And coming in, that's thankful that we had to call a special meeting for several of their items, this being one of them. This is, this would have been easily a finding. And it, it still could be because one, we have an expenditure that doesn't follow the expenditure, uh, policy and procedure, uh, recommendation. So, and then my only other question is, C thirty, the two thousand six, is that the chief mobile? What, what is the Chevy on the, uh, annual inspection report? Because it's all, like I said, I mean.
Nineteen eighty. Probably. Let me get back to it.
A two thousand six?
I thought you said nineteen eighty-six.
Oh, sorry. No, there's a two thousand six. It's listed under model C thirty.
Oh, this is C thirty right here.
The year is two thousand six.
Well.
Oh, I think maybe.
It's a, it's a one ton. That's our brush truck.
Two thousand eighty-six. I think the.
Should be nineteen eighty-six.
It's just extremely horrible penmanship.
Yeah, penmanship. Yeah.
Okay, no.
So that definitely is the brush truck.
Okay.
Okay. I was like.
Uh, anyway, you had me, uh, wondering.
New truck is the, the new used truck, whatever is.
What is that? Yeah. Anyways, so what is, what is it? What is the total and what is the GL that you're looking at expenditure of said GLs?
I think it was five thousand.
I totaled all the invoices you gave me and they were six thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents. Haley also totaled it to confirm that number.
And GL.
And, and I'll apologize that this wasn't better prepared, but we went on a CPR call just prior to me, uh. Handing this into the clerk. So.
So to that motion, it would be a GL, what, uh, two oh five, two oh five, three, three, six, nine, three, eight, zero, zero, zero. Vehicle maintenance to the cost of six thousand, one hundred, uh, sixty-seven dollars and forty cents, uh, that. Work's already been concluded.
Got it.
Got to pay it at this point.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Got a motion and support for the discussion. Seeing none. Uh, we'll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Clerk Clavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
And I will put, uh, that company on notice for next year that I'd like to quota.
Are there other companies that can actually do it?
If there are, I don't know of any.
Uh, let's discover. I know obviously we have a local asset and, and that's wonderful in terms of Mr. Soy. Um, but there's always more than one way to skin a cat.
And, and.
I don't want to be hamstrung as a board member saying, we're the only show in town and now you have to pay us.
And, you know, we still do have one of their vehicles that their company has sold that is still on warranty. So that would be a. A, a, a touchy subject at that time, but as far as I know, all area local fire departments currently use R and R, including the city of Elpina. What their city drives does not take care of.
Copy. Okay. So moving forward in the agenda, Laura, did you have any other discussion today?
No.
Okay, sorry. Uh, then, uh, this is the.
It's, yeah, it's only one of the others. Can you sign?
Copy that. Road agreement. Uh, so moving forward, uh, this is the second opportunity for public comment. Uh, is there any, uh, public comment online? Seeing no public comment. If there is public comment, I'll give an opportunity for the, uh. Delay in terms of, uh, technology. If there's any public comment, please use the bottom task bar under ellipsis. And utilize, uh, the, uh, hand to raise your hand or use the text to text. If not, seeing no public comment, further discussion by the board.
I have nothing.
None.
Okay. There's no further discussion. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to adjourn and support for the discussion.
None.
Seeing none. Appreciate the assistance on that. Uh, all those in favor of a judgment signified by saying aye.
All right.
Aye, meeting adjourned at two forty-nine.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Good job.